Good evening, everybody. Council meeting to order. Chisholm City Council meeting, June 14th, 2023. Susan, would you please take roll call?
Commissioner Robertson.
Present.
Commissioner Nicola Raja.
Present.
Commissioner Barton.
Here.
Commissioner Halva.
Present.
Commissioner Vaki.
Here.
Mayor Lam.
Here.
Okay, council, we have some more changing changes again, so bear with me. You want to write next to Tiffany on new business A, change that to D3. That will be under Steph, and that will be D3. So you can cross out A, we're going to remove that. Bern, you put a slash there, and that will be D4 under Stephanie. Mandy will be moved to A. Jim will be B. And Bridget's item will be D5. Eileen will be moved to C. Obviously, now Steph will be items D, myself will be E, and Travis will be F. There will be items six and seven under Steph, which is the pair resolution for a new hire at the PD after passing all his background, and I'd like to get that individual hired. And item number seven will be a new housing development bonding resolution. So it closes on the 16th, and we need to try to get some requests in before the window shuts down. So I apologize for a lot of these late additions, but it's going to be a busy summer, and a lot of these things have been popping up, and just try to take care of them as quickly as possible. So if there are any further questions? Oh, excuse me. There is a revision that we saw in our email. Under Jim, there was the pay application number three. You all have the revision in front of you, and Jim will walk us through when we get to So if there's nothing further, I'd look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make the motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Robertson opposed. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I don't believe there's any public participation.
Nope.
Okay. We do have the Martins in audience, and they'll speak when we get to them under the agenda. Start with council reports. Commissioner Robertson, good evening.
Good evening. I attended a part of a meeting and also attended the preparation and the stay out at the head for the Minnesota Mountain Bike Series. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fulton, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. June 6th, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for our new public safety building. It was a beautiful day and a beautiful speech.
Thank you.
Great job. I also attended the Miss Chisholm pageant, where the guy next to me was the emcee for the night. And I just want to give a shout out and congratulations to J.C. Kohler, Amy Fontaine, is how you say it?
Fontaine.
Fontaine, and Jesselyn Podger. And I also wanted to, even though we're living in Chisholm here, but I also wanted to let the folks know this is a community celebration. We're having Juneteenth here in Chisholm on Sunday, Father's Day. We're also going to have a Juneteenth celebration. They're going to have one in Hibbing. And so where I work, at the library, we're putting it on, the city of Hibbing, and Buy for Freedom, so I want to just let, it's all free. We've got some really cool artists coming out, and DJs, and poetry, and it's just going to be rad. So I want to invite the community to the Hibbing City Hall lawn Tuesday, June 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mentioning Juneteenth here on Father's Day, you have the opportunity to pay money and drop the mayor into a dunk tank. Come on out. Commissioner Vaki, good evening.
Good evening. I have quite a few things to talk about today. I was also at the public safety building opening on June 6th, which was, again, fantastic for this community. I know it's been decades in the making. I'm glad that, you know, we were all able to make it happen. Also, I want to take the time, even though Tiff's not here, but I want to take the time to plug the ambulance service. Big thank you to that service. You know, when Marty and Adam and I sat down and started the process of transitioning that to the city, transfers was something that we had talked about and were there. We've done transfers, and it's fantastic. We've had exponential growth. We're going to have a spot in the public safety building. We're hiring another person tonight to be, it's just, it's incredible to see. And I think we've made waves, and that's why, you know, we get a new person almost every meeting we have. So it's really a great thing for the city. I will also be at the Juneteenth thing, and after the mayor's done, it'll be my turn to be in the dunk tank. So you can also pay to dunk me. Softball update. We have strong numbers again for softball. We have five women's teams and six men's teams, which is, six is about our max. We almost had a seventh team, but it gets a little tricky with only one set of lights. But that's going strong on Wednesdays and Thursdays. This more, or I just came from a community foundation meeting. I just wanted to plug their golf scramble, which is July 24th on a Monday. The inaugural Blue Streak scramble is August 3rd. That's a school-sponsored golf scramble, so that's at Wolf Ridge, and I hope that we get good numbers for that as well. And then just a couple of other things to plug. The HUG extravaganza is doing raffle tickets, so that is in July on the 22nd. And then the Chamber is having a fast speed raffle that is coming in August. So be on the lookout for information for that. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Travis? Good evening, Shannon.
Good evening.
Commissioner Nicola Raja.
Shannon is fine, too. It is my name. I attended the groundbreaking ceremony. I also attended a police commission meeting, and that's all I have unless there are any questions.
Good to see the hiring coming through.
I was able to meet him. He seems very nice.
Excellent. Commissioner Halva.
Good evening. I also attended the groundbreaking on June 6th. Thank you for your wonderful speech. It went really well. I attended the EDA working session last week. I attended the IFR lunch and learn last month. I was talking about housing, workforce housing. Also, I had a pleasure of speaking with a camper at the gas station up here. You said our camper on, you rated our camper on out of a scale of one to 10? A 10. He was very satisfied. He's super happy with everybody, the friendly faces he had and everything, too, so.
Yep. So myself, well, first of all, thank you for the kind words, but again, one thing that I'd say during the groundbreaking, you know, the staff and the council and supporting this, and, you know, it's been a lot of work over a long period of time. So this is something that we should all be proud of in the community also. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work, especially our staff. Assistant Fire Chief Jason Worley celebrated 15 years of service to the community, so thank you, Jason, for everything that you've done and continue to do. This morning, I was able to sit in on the Mindland Vision Partnership, where they celebrated their 25th anniversary, and MDC had a press conference announcing the $1.6 million for the LCCMR is now underway. It's been signed and pushed through. So sitting in that meeting and listening to everybody in all the different groups, and the one thing I forgot to take away from that is their visions, almost all of them, unanimously, is they're talking about the future generations. And that's pretty much everything that we're doing and we're here for, is leaving it better than we found it and leave it better for the people that come after us. So it's very good to see the champions in our community that are working through and, you know, the success we're having. So thank you, everybody. Moving on, Analyst Director, Tiff is gone this evening. Fire Chief, Chris? Police Chief is gone this evening. Building and zoning, Mandy, good evening.
I do have a short report. Good evening. I just wanted to update the council on how the department is doing in building permits and the progress we've had through the summer. Currently, we have a total of 81 building permits, and that's a total value of $11,566,628. So as you can imagine, the largest portion of that value is our public safety building. However, there is still $2 to $3 million left in the other community that is residential and commercial development and rehab throughout communities. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're very busy, and if you have any questions or comments, just let me know.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
City Engineer.
I have no report. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, I thought I skipped over Larry. So I'm getting all excited in the back. Jim, why you didn't?
I'm good, thank you. No report tonight unless you have questions to me other than what I have on the agenda. Thank you.
Any questions for Jim? Public Works, Larry, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, just some updates. We continue to work through the late spring, and as we get into summer here, we are grading all the alleys and adding material, so that's going really well. It's a little dusty out there. It hasn't, we'd expect a little bit more rain than we've had. You know, a sprinkle here and there overnight would be nice, but we'll take what it is right now. The sweeper is fixed as of yesterday and back working on the south side of town. And the water and sewer crews have, you've probably seen a little plug on Facebook, that they've, they've got the water supply and sewer up to the splash pad area. So we continue to work through that with the Chamber and Bridget and there. So our new tentative date, you know, we think will be August 1st or somewhere around there. So that's what we're hopeful for. So working through permitting and things like that. And then we ended up fully staffed this year with our youth, you know, our summer youth, our summer employees, not all youth. And we, thanks to Susan and Bridget helping, we, Susan really very helpful with her knowledge and experience that we're, we're working with a state program with a person with disabilities into the workforce. So they buddy up and they have a job coach and stuff like that. Individuals, great. Tons of Chisholm pride. You would absolutely love to meet him if you haven't. His name's Trevor, and you may see him around, so he's a joy to talk to.
Awesome.
Those are the highlights. So I know you have a busy meeting ahead of you tonight, so evening. Just there's a valve leaking over by the public safety building site. Jim helped us with a county permit, and we're going to dig on the county road tomorrow, kind of by the east side of the causeway there. So we'll be digging that tomorrow, and we have Sabans on the, on the hook. They're waiting for a call tomorrow, so we can get some hot mix right away and get the road back to where it needs to be. And just keep plugging away. Thank you, Jim.
Excellent. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, Bridget is gone this evening. Katie is gone this evening. Ryan is not here yet. City Clerk, Treasurer, Eileen.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Thank you. So just a couple of items I wanted to share. We did confirm the auditor's visit will be here the week of June 26th, so we have a place set up for them right next to Stephanie's office, and they plan to be here doing field work for about two and a half weeks. So accounting staff as well as Susan are preparing for their visit, compiling documentation, getting ready for that. I've been attending with Stephanie and Jim and several other department heads, meetings with Adolfson Peterson. They provide us with an update on the public safety building project, and it's been a really good platform to communicate, for them to communicate information to us. It's very detailed, and it also allows us to ask questions and request information. So it's a great interaction. Also, Stephanie and I have been working quite closely in finalizing all the public safety buildings' financial resources. With the influx of the unexpected amount we received from the state general fund, we've had to reconfigure our scheduling, which we'll discuss tonight in our working session. But that, for me, has been actually a lot of fun because it's the analysis of numbers. So Stephanie and I have been working on that and learning a lot along the way. I also wanted to give a shout out to all the department heads for just the relationship, the collaboration that we're doing with each other. I've been working on the capital improvement schedule, and that requires a lot of input from my cohorts, and without your cooperation, you know, it makes my job easier. I also wanted to mention the accounting staff, Misty, Denise, and Kristy. You know, sometimes we experience issues with our telephone, right? So you get people that come in and have strong words about not being able to make contact with our department, right? So just their professionalism and the way they handle those types of interaction with the community, I just really appreciate it and wanted to recognize that. And it could be, you know, a coupling of summertime, right? Everyone's in a good mood, right? Enjoying this time of year. But I also think it really is all of our departments just rising to the occasion and working well together as a result of leadership in place, and her name is Stephanie. So I just wanted to say that. I think it's important that you guys know that. On a personal level, I'm a participant in the sand volleyball week, and I really appreciate the opportunity that that presents to interact with the community. So it's been a lot of fun, right, so far, except we had a Y week like the NFL. Sand volleyball? I don't know. So I didn't think to play this week, but just wanted to share that. Any questions?
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Administrator, Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening, council and mayor. Just to piggyback on some things Eileen said, we've been working diligently with the financials at this point, getting all of our projects in place that we're currently working on and planning for the future. Bonding requests are due on Friday for 2024 bonding, so we have been identifying the priorities and trying to seek some additional funding for some more projects. I also want to say the public safety building groundbreaking ceremony went great. They are still, they're working on the dirt work on that site. As you're aware, there's a lot of rocks, so it's taking a little bit longer than was anticipated, but still diligently working through that process. I also want to mention at the Iron Range Engineering Building, there is a sign being made as we speak. It will be named the Senator David Tomasoni Building, Iron Range Engineering in memory of our late senator. So that's really great, a great name for that building. He did a lot of work for our community and for education, so that will be coming up soon. This should be done by the end of June. I think that's all I have. If there's any questions for me.
No questions? Just to piggyback on the groundbreaking, I was part of the meeting for the construction project, and it was two to three weeks for excavating, and then weeks four to six, they're going to start doing it in the footings, and then after that, they'll be breaking into concrete. So be a lot of changes over the next few weeks. Evening, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry I'm late.
No, it's quite all right. It happens. Anything to add? Any reports?
No formal report, but I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. She listed bills, communications, Heritage Manor Open House, June 21st, 2023. May 2nd, 2023, Chisholm Parks Trails and Rec Advisory Board minutes. May 4th, 2023, Chisholm Police Commission Meeting Minutes. May 31st, 2023, Rams Legislative Update. June 2023, Chisholm Public Library Report. Minutes of previous city council meeting, May 24th, 2023. Payroll and overtime. I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion?
I just want to, oh, I'm sorry, Marty. I just want to elaborate. I asked Susan to include the Rams Legislative Update. I would encourage you, if you didn't read that, to read that. There's tons of funding information and stuff in that report, so just I have Y eye on that.
Okay. Marty?
There's an item missing from the minutes. The two to one vote to send Travis to the executive council meeting is not in minutes.
Oh, you heard it correctly. I don't see it.
You're right.
Great catch.
Good catch.
Yep. Good catch. Commissioner Nicola, I can get you to amend your motion to back in revisals minutes.
I'll amend my motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne. You second, Travis?
Yeah. I'll amend my second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business, so we will move on to item A, Mandy Galley.
Good evening. The item on the agenda is the reservation and certification to the Todd and Keith's certificate survey of planning vision and yourselves as the council who gave it last meeting, and you received the certification and reservation approved for recording that was to serve the calling.
Okay, council, I'd look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 0623-36. Make the motion. Thank you, Jed. Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mandy. Mr. Johnson, item B.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. and Council, page 13, which is the request of council action. And I'll take you through a revision that we found last week when we were having our public safety building status meeting. If you look on the second line, it talks about the amount due, and it shows $82,991. If you cross that out and put in $83,140.75, and I'll go through that with you on the new pay application that you had in front of you that you presented out through the studio. And I'll try to make this, explain what happened there and what changed. If you go to page 32, which is the backside of the continuation sheet of that pay application, when Brandon, the man who approved this all, when he hoped that Tommy T. on the top item would be an official decision, when he started procuring this pay application, he had just carried across from the previous month the $45,000. And then the only item of work that was done during May is down on line 17 under the labor for plumbing and heating, which is the $24,200. In the old pay application that you found in your agenda, Brandon had that construction fee that's down on line 22 is calculated on the basis of 1.75% of the construction work done that month. Brandon, like a Brandon, like I said, had brought the $45,000 across, added it to the $24,200, and came up to the $1,211, which is representative, or in the correct figure, at 1.75%. But after that, he went back and looked at what their costs were for the month and needed to revise it up to $58,700 rather than $45,000. So the revised sheet that you have now on line 22, $1,450.75, is 1.75% of those two numbers that you see above, about $58,700 plus $24,200. Okay with that now? All right. So basically, it increases the price of that item on line 22 by a little over $200. So then if you go back to the previous page on the revised sheet you have in front of you, going down through that, this is now the corrected version, you've got your original contract sum. Item four talks about the total work completed to date, which is summarized on column I on the backside of that sheet you wanted. Then you see item five, which is retainage, which is 5% of the work done, which the only work done in terms of labor and materials is the $24,200 that we just talked about on the plumbing and heating labor cost. So that 5% represents the $1,210. So subtracting that, item five from line four gives you what you see in line six is the total earned, less that retained age, and which now would be $419,875.62 totally earned or to be paid out. Then line item, line seven, excuse me, which is the total on column F on the backside that we paid in pay application 102 last month, the $336,734.87. So the balance due, as you see in line nine, excuse me, in line eight, current payment due is six minus seven, which is the $83,140.75. And then that's actually, if you look at the backside, that's column G, which was the $84,100, excuse me, $84,350.75 minus the retained, so it's those two numbers. So you see the balance left of work to be accomplished before we can move in, almost $10,800,000. So with that, I hope I didn't confuse you too much. I'm an engineer, so I have to give you the detail. I'd be happy to answer your questions if you might ask. So what we're asking for is approval for payment in the amount for pay application number three of $82,140.75.
Very good, Jim. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have any more questions? Right, Counsel, I would look for a motion to approve pay application number three, the amount of $83,140.75.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along. Eileen, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first item I would present tonight is in regards to the Fire Protection Service Contract for unorganized friendships.
Counsel, this is dropping down to page 76 in your packet.
This is for fiscal year 2024. This is an annual contract that the city renews with the county. And this year, I've worked with Chris and Jason on an appropriate percentage change to the current contract mark. And from the documentation that you have in your packet, what I'd like to add is some information as to how we arrived at this proposed 7% increase. Because of an increase of costs, right, over the last few years, one of the biggest costs that the fire department has experienced is diesel fuel costs. They've increased 95% since from 2020 to 2022. And I took a look at the price per gallon from the U.S. Energy Information Administration website. So it's quite substantial that fuel costs have increased. Also, what the fire department has experienced is increase in costs of gear and equipment. In the last two years, they've experienced an increase of 25%. So just some information to consider. Also, equipment maintenance has experienced a minimum increase of 10% since 2020. Another item that I took a look at was to see how the city of Chisholm has requested increases as far as their fires protection services contract with the colony. In 2019 and 2020, it stayed the same. We didn't request an increase. We were at 16,232. In 2021, we requested and received approval for a 4% increase. In 20, I'm sorry, I meant 2021, I apologize. In 2022, we requested and received approval from the county for a 3% increase, and the same increase we requested in 2023. So currently, we're at 17,943. So I also did take a look at other cities that provide, that negotiate with the colony for this type of service, and other cities were at quite a bit, a higher percentage of increases that they've asked for and received. So I also took a look at comparable in population, right, at other cities. I don't, I don't believe I should identify those yet. So some cities that were comparable in population have asked for 23% increase. So it was, it was, I think it was important to take a look at where we fall. Because this information is provided by the county, these other cities are listed on the contract, is there anything you want to add to this?
Well, I guess just so everybody's aware, our coverage area for unorganized is 37 square miles. It roughly runs from Dewey Lake all the way over to Clearwater Lake on the west side. Population-wise, about 270 people. So like Eileen said, some of these communities are asking more. Some of the state has status quo also, but I can't see reason in it anymore because it's 270. Some of these, or townships, that's their only funding, you know, or their township for the fire department. We definitely need to bring it up a little, and I think that seven was a good number, just because of price of gear, maintenance, people, you know, pretty much everything. Everybody knows that all their stuff is one number. So we thought seven would be a fair, fair number, fair percentage to go up.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
For me?
All right. Okay, is, oh, one?
I was just going to reiterate that I respectfully ask the Council to consider increasing the Fire Protection Service Contract by 7% for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. Counsel, if there's any further questions, I would hope that we would support that increase. I look for a motion to approve it. I make the motion. Thank you, Jed.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up.
Next item is in regards to the lodging tax administration. And before we begin, I wanted to give you some information about how we arrived here at tonight's meeting to consider this subject. I received an email from Bridgette, our recreation director, last year in October, and she was approached by the Iron Range, it's Beth over at the, this Iron Range Tourism Office, about charging a lodging tax through our campground sales. And Bridgette approached me and asked me about how we do this, how do we initiate it, what's this about? Some information was provided by Beth over at the Iron Range Tourism Office about lodging tax. And once I dug into what lodging tax was, I found that we currently have a joint powers agreement with the city of Evolent. And they, on that agreement, as are indicated in the memo and the documentation that I've provided, the city of Chisholm is clearly named in that agreement, which dates back to 1988. I did reach out to the person that provided me a copy of this agreement from the city of Evolent to confirm that it was in fact, in effect, and that person did confirm that. Contrastly, we do have a tax administrator named in our ordinance as the city clerk. So this is really just some, in my perspective, some house cleaning that we need to do. And I feel it's important that we, as a city, administer the lodging tax ourselves because we can make decisions about where that money goes to. So that's why I'm bringing this to you today. Brian, did you want to add anything today?
No. Mayor, if I may, Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee has done a wonderful job in backgrounding this. We consulted just briefly. At the time that we consulted, she showed that she had a full understanding of everything that was going on. She understood the contract. And I mean, the last thing that I would add is, a lot of times, these, this type of joint powers agreement as it relates to lodging tax is fairly common, but the reason that a lot of times these agreements are common is because dealing with the lodging tax isn't necessarily the ordinary type of business that we do, and not every community is fortunate enough to have qualified staff that can handle the administration. And so Ms. Lee is qualified to do it and has a great grasp of it, and that's all I have.
So how does this come, does our hotel in town or Airbnb usually pay a lodging tax? That's, okay, perfect.
And Mayor, the one additional thing I would add, the interesting thing about lodging, the lodging tax, it's collected for a very specific purpose, to promote tourism within the area in which it's collected. So there may be some additional opportunity here with the recreational opportunities that Chisholm has developed.
Thank you, Mayor.
So thank you. So.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to cancel the joint powers agreement with the city of Evolent and engage the city of Chisholm city clerk as the tax administrator for ordinance.
Okay, April?
Point one zero.
So is there support?
Do we need to do them separate, or is it okay to do it together?
Uh, we, well, actually, I mean, doing it separately is the more appropriate. Once we get, once, once we're directed to give notice and cancel the joint power agreement, the default is that it would come back to the city to administer, but I think a secondary motion just designating that we'll handle it internally is appropriate.
Perfect.
Okay.
So I'll just make, you know.
So just cancel. Motion to cancel.
Motion to cancel first.
Yes.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right, Counsel, so we would now look for a motion to.
Direct.
Just reestablish that the city handled our lodging taxes.
Call for voting.
I'll make that motion, that the city will handle our taxes per ordinance.
Thank you, April.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
All this work finding.
Yes.
Wow.
Okay, moving on, Stephanie. Ask me memo of understanding on page 94.
Good evening, Counsel. On page 94 of your packet, there's a MOU for the ASME to move our library aides to library tech tools. Just a little background on this, I obviously was not here when these positions were developed, but as time has gone on and the library has become a lot more active, offering a lot of activities and services to our community, these positions have evolved. I've spoken in length with our library supervisor and the staff there on what makes sense for these positions. Katie can't single-handedly do the events on her own, so she does need help of the staff. And with the library only having three people on board, it's important that, that the positions make sense for the service that we're providing to the community. The library aide position, I would say, was just a little bit under what is being conducted by the staff that's there. They have taken on some additional duties with such events, so we can offer more. So what I'm recommending is that we move our library aides to a library tech two position. Within the contract and on the MOU, it would, what we would do, so the library tech two is the only position classified as a class five in our ASME contract, and that would be at $26 an hour for the, for the 2023, the year 2023 in the new contract. If you have any questions on this, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Steph, and thank you for working with the staff through this. I mean, obviously, we need to be competitive with our communities that are around us, and our staff here is doing the same work as someone in our community and making off far less, so. Is there any further questions for Stephanie? If not, I would hope that we could find a motion in support to.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel, partner.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion?
Can I just add something to that?
Sure.
So 20 years ago, we did have these positions. They were library technician positions. And then, I don't know, something happened. I moved on, and they turned to library aides, and now I'm glad they're back to what they're supposed to. Appreciate that. Thank you.
It's nice to get a little background.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we've been working diligently on identifying projects to move forward with the 2024 bonding requests. This next item on the agenda is exactly that. It's a bonding request for the city public works garage, moving that facility. As you all know, within our comp plan, having the city public works garage in a residential area is, is less than desirable, so if we can move that outside and then concentrate on housing within that area right by the lake. So I'm just requesting approval for Resolution Number 0623-37 to request bonding funds for the city public works garage.
Excellent. Great work, Steph. Counsel?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have is to hire a new AMT. Travis had mentioned, things are moving in emergency services here at the city, and we are happy that, to request approval to hire Luke Glucki to the ambulance service.
Another exciting hire. I believe Luke is also working through to get his medic, so we would love to have him here.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have on the agenda is, just informational, informing the Council of a gambling permit that was approved by the Gambling Commission for St. Joseph's Catholic Church to hold a raffle on October 14th, 2023, and for the Chisholm Chamber for Raffle on July 24th. Bingo on August 2nd and raffle on 17th. On August 17th of 2020. Bingo on August 2nd and raffle on 17th, on August 17 of 2023. So that has already gone through the Gambling Commission and approved. So just informational for the council tonight. The next item I have on the agenda is, I might have to lean a little bit on some of our staff and council on this one. They're just more knowledgeable on it than I am, but I will, I will get through it. Unfortunately, Bridgette couldn't be here tonight. So the Northern Tracks ATV Trail is going to be rerouted outside of the Redhead to come up the bike area. So what we have to do is we have to have approval on page 33 of your packet. Approval and signatures on three land use agreements. The Minnesota DNR Grant New Trail Permit Amendment, CN Masabi Trail, for the Northern Tracks ATV Trail for Chisholm to hit me. Brian, do we have to do separate?
As long as there's no objection and they're all unanimous, then yeah, we could do them all together. But if there's a request to separate, then we'd have to separate.
Okay. I don't know, Counselor Halberst, if you have anything? Has the Redhead liaison on this or not?
No, I have no questions or concerns.
So we're just looking for approval for the land use agreements for that reroute.
My counsel? Look for a motion to support the land use agreements.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have on the agenda, as stated in some reports, we have a new hire at the Chisholm Police Department, Nicholas Nobens. The resolution number 0623-38, it's for PARA resolution for Nicholas. He started June 6th with the Chisholm Police Department, and we're happy to have him. So we're just looking for approval for the PARA.
My counsel, look for a motion to support resolution 0623-38.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Last item on the agenda is another bonding request. We figure we might as well put another one in since we got the opportunity to do so. So this is for infrastructure, for a new housing development with the city of Chisholm known as a wet addition, which counsel is familiar with, and community members have had a chance to weigh in on. The request will be for $4 million. This would include full infrastructure of that project. So I'm just looking for approval for resolution number 0623-39 for me to be able to submit the bonding request.
Thank you, Steph. My counsel?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you.
It's gonna be huge. Things are rolling right in Chisholm, so keep them going.
Wow.
If you don't ask, you won't get it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steph. Hey, item number one, Josh and Jessica Martin from Martin Motors requesting shutting down part of Central for a car show, July 1st. Would you guys like to come up, kind of tell everybody what your plan is? What you have going on?
Thank you for seeing us for the car show questions and everything. Kind of like, we're different people.
It happens the first time for the mic.
So basically, what we want to do is we're kind of want to have a grand opening with a ribbon cutting that we haven't, haven't done yet yet. We've had a lot of community support on our business. Most car shows, people come in, they pay $5, $10. We want to have everybody donate a can of food, get that to Chisholm Food Show. Just kind of, it's the same kind of key. We're having high-end hot barbecue there at Chisholm after giving. It's Jeff Provenzino, Over Revival wants to play in the park.
The bonus that we're creating next door.
It's 10 to 2, and we told our crew we would clean everything else.
We do need two garbage cans from the city, and we're looking for approval for the parking lot next to Anderson for extra parking.
For the hot rods.
What?
For the hot rods.
Yeah, for the hot rods. And then we already got approval from...
Yeah. Yeah. The interment says the lot directly across from us, he said we can use those lots to park cars. And then we talked to Kelly from Jones. She would be willing to bring a beer cart down there and get the insurance there's a chance to involve for that other 10 to 2, so...
Yep, so...
Questions?
Well, we would have to add this to a citywide festival for the duration of the 10 to 2 if we were to allow that beer cart. Burn had no complaints. Larry, I don't think you had any issues? Counsel, do you have any further questions? Are there any questions? So hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the request and to make this a citywide festival down in the Quonis Park. Or make the Quonis Park a citywide festival.
Make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Thank you, April. Any further discussion?
Have you been in contact with Shannon about the ribbon cutting?
Yes. She actually said we should do it all together with our grand opening and car show. So she probably has her vehicle there, so...
Good deal. All right.
And also, we are looking for a comfortable as well still. So we think we found one for giving, or wait, Chisholm inside lake, possibly giving.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
And then we're going to have birth designs, make flyers, and we'll put them up everywhere. So if you could back us, because we only have two weeks to advertise.
Yeah. Sure, no problem.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome to the community with your business. I hope you're successful, and thank you for being proactive and engaging in the community.
Thank you.
Counselors, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Next item, Jim Sports Club requests a lift noise ordinance for the Hug Extravaganza, July 22, 2023. This was the mystery date that we were confused over. So I believe the other dates we allowed until 11:00 p.m. So unless there's anything else, any counsel, any input, or...
I'd say just stay consistent, 11 o'clock again.
Is that a motion?
Well, does anyone else have any input before I don't make a motion without any?
Take charge.
All right. Well, I guess I'll make a motion then to approve the noise ordinance till 11:00 p.m. on July 22 for the Hug Extravaganza.
Thank you, Travis. Your support for that?
A second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Vaki, good evening.
Good evening. All right. So like you see in my memo, this is nothing new. It's long before all of us were sitting in this chair. The city has provided a $1,000 advertisement promotional to the community foundation for their golf scramble. This year, the scramble is on July 24th. And I'm just asking the council to continue that tradition of supporting the foundation. They give us a lot of grants. And I also talked with both Eileen and Steph. They are a 501(c)(3), which makes them eligible for our gambling revenue that we use. And I think it's a great opportunity to use that, and then we don't have to worry about the general fund. So...
Absolutely. Good work.
If there's any questions, if there are, let me know.
If I may add, Mayor, just in support of Travis, I did confirm with the state gambling control board that there weren't any other conditions we had to meet other than the 501(c)(3) designation. And I also did print off confirmation that they are, in fact, the CCF is a Bible 1(c)(3) organization. So being the true accounting professional, I have all the documentation.
Excellent.
You, Eileen. Hi, counsel.
I am so thankful that we can use this gambling fund instead of the general fund. But every year, it gave me a little bit of an ick feeling.
Perfect. Would you like to lead us off then?
Yes, I will make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Support. Thank you, Jed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything for miscellaneous?
Just a couple things. The library supervisor asked that I would just kind of, she had her board report. She wasn't able to make it today. So I could just let the community know what's going on at the library, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry to ask you.
All right. So at the Chisholm Public Library, the summer reading program began. It's called, this year, Find Your Voice. The Chisholm Summer Reading Program started on Monday, June 5, and will run for six weeks through to, through until July 14. And all ages are welcome. They had a summer reading program kickoff party on June 7, and they had 108 kids and 47 adults in attendance for a day filled with crafting, snacks, and books, and book readings. They also had, on June 8, at 1 o'clock, they had Storytime with Cheyenne, which was a program sponsored by the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. And on June 21, at 10:00 a.m. coming up, they are going to have Climb Theater, Ant, and The Grasshopper, which is a mini-play that supports literacy and reading readiness. And it also, they have a little, I've seen it, it's great. Find Your Voice is the huge thing, you know, making your voice heard. And this program, that program is funded by the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. So she just wants everybody to come out and sign up for the summer reading program and earn prizes and tickets and incentives. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, April. Okay, if there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to recess to a closed session. You have a motion for that, right?
Make that motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.